Good evening all, I welcome you to the July 8th Montemoy Regional School Committee Meeting. We start the meeting at 7:08. And we entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from June 24th.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, corrections, additions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
So approved. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Anyone wish to address the school committee meeting? It'll just have a seat right there.
Hello. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Denise Sessler, and until recently I was a math-
Excuse me, I have a hearing issue, could you speak louder?
Sure.
I appreciate it, thank you.
For those of you who do not know me, my name is Denise Sessler, and until recently I was a math and physics teacher at Montemoy High School. I felt it was necessary for me to speak tonight on behalf of my former students, who I believe are being put in a vulnerable position educationally this upcoming year. I am not a disgruntled teacher. I am a concerned educator, a parent, and an informed community member. Tonight I want to talk about class sizes. Because I am from the math department, I can give you data concerning the numbers and sizes of the math classes that will run this upcoming year, as well as the math classes that cannot run due to elimination in staffing. However, I do assure you, what we are experiencing in the math department is also being felt in all the other departments. Regarding core courses, in order to graduate, all students at Montemoy High School are required to earn four high school credits, not eighth grade credits, in math, English, and history. They are also required to earn three credits in science. The current staffing for the upcoming year at the high school is seven full-time teachers in math, seven full-time teachers in English, eight full-time teachers in history, six full-time teachers in science, with an additional posting for a science teacher which must be filled in order to fulfill the requirements of the graduation requirements for the students. Please note, high-stakes testings occur in the English and the math. MCAS does require a high school passing grade for graduation, but there is no PARC science test at the present moment. Should Massachusetts go to PARC, then testing will only be in the English and the math departments at the present time. With that stated, we should really not be losing teachers in the English and the math departments, but we did. We lost a .6 position in the math and a 1.2 in the English. At the same time as this reduction has taken place, the fourth-year math requirement has been instituted. I spoke specifically about this issue at the last meeting. At the present time, there are 20 scheduled classes that have 22 or more students registered, excluding band. I believe this is above the promised class sizes that were presented to the public. In the math department, based upon student registration and the numbers of sections that we could run, we have six classes that are 22 or more students. We also needed to eliminate eight courses that were in the programs of studies and had students registered for them. We eliminated two foundations of math courses, one alternative ed-math course, one Algebra II course, which then created a chain reaction with the other courses that were running and ran up the numbers in the class sizes. One AP Stats course, that also wound up bumping the class sizes that the other AP class courses we're going to have. One AP Calc BC course, one pre-AP Calc course, this now impacts the next fiscal year so that there will be no Calc BC in fiscal year 2016, 2017. And one Integrated II course, again, that caused a chain reaction of requiring larger class sizes. Five of the eight courses that were eliminated were developed specifically to help the more mathematically challenged students. This is a lost opportunity for 52 students. This is all very concerning to me. At the same time these courses were removed from the schedule in the math department, the business department has been eliminated. I will remind you that there was the ability for students to earn additional math credits through the accounting courses. Once again, this was another path for the most mathematically challenged students that have been eliminated. One of the last days of schools, the students who I spoke about that will not have enough math credits to graduate are called into the guidance office. They were informed that they will be taking an online VHS class, virtual high school class, course next year in order to earn the missing math credit. I simply cannot believe this is the alternative being offered to this group of kids. We're not talking about the above-average student. Think about why they actually don't have enough credits to graduate going into their senior year. I tried to explain that there are philosophical differences of opinions on whether or not it's best to retain students when they have not mastered the required concepts and skills necessary to succeed at the next level. It's not done until they reach high school age. Thus, the problem at hand. These students were behind in their skills when they entered grade nine, and some of them still are not proficient at the level they're at, but they are making progress. So what do we do to them? We tell them to take an online course without supervision. That makes absolutely no sense to me. There will be no math teacher supervising us. I don't believe there will be anyone for these students to go to when they have a question. Since we have rotating class schedules, I do not believe that this online math class will be a typical class structure. They will not be Skyping into a class. They will be on their own to succeed. By the way, have you ever tried to solve a mathematical problem using all of the symbols on a computer? No paper and pencil allowed. This is very, very difficult. I thought about showing them an example of the level of math that they would be required to work out, but I think I would rather ask you to think about a very simple long division Like 538.24 divided by 12. How would you do that? Show all the work and do that on the computer. You have to use the proper symbols, you have to line up the digits, you have to line up the decimals, and that's basic math. How are they going to do higher-level math on the computer? I think there's going to be some frustration for them, but they can't give up, and they won't graduate. I do want to share with you some experiences I had over the past two years with four students who were required for graduation purposes to take online VHS courses to earn the required credits. Two succeeded, two did not. One of the two that succeeded finished the course within five minutes of the graduation deadline, and that is no joke. Eight teachers sat around and waited for him to push the enter button five minutes before the graduation. Two did not finish, they did not graduate, they dropped out of school. I'm begging you to find an alternative method for these students to earn their fourth math grade. This is so incredibly unfair to them. The faculties of Harwich and Chatham have worked an immense number of hours for many years to bring the two fantastic districts together to create an even better regional district. We do have many great opportunities in place for students to achieve great things at Montemoy. But why are we making some of these decisions that will greatly impact the futures of some of our wonderful lower-level students? Mr. Carpenter stated at the last meeting that through all of the staff retirements and resignations, there is $660,000 that can be used towards supporting programs in the district. Why can't we increase the math department by one full-time employee, or at least the .6 that Jan McGroy was promised? Why can't you increase the English department by one full-time employee so that it is also staffed in an equivalent level to the history department? And why can't we bring back the business department to the high school at a one full-time employee and offer the courses that 341 students had originally registered for? My calculations suggest that this would cost approximately $170,000, which is actually 26 percent of the $660,000. I would think that that is fair, since the Montemoy Regional High School is 25 percent of the schools in the district. Thank you for listening to me. I do have data to support my numbers, because I believe they were questioned, and I have my notes from the last meeting, should anyone want them, and I have a copy of what I have read tonight. If you'd like any more.
Thank you. Thank you for all that work you put into it.
Could anyone else quick care to address the school committee's seat? Mr. Houston?
Just wanted to-
Please, speak louder.
Richard Houston from the high school. I just wanted to comment on the 5K road race held over in Harwich on the 27th. There was a fantastic showing of Montemoy students from the elementary school to the high school, some competing with the running club, some kids from the high school and middle school athletic teams, kids volunteering to work on the course, and it was, of course, driven partly to raise funds for children's activities, and it was just a great community spirit, and I just thought the school committee would want to know that the kids and adults were out there putting a good face on Montemoy. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My granddaughter was one of those. It was a great first race.
Any others? Okay, we'll move on. Next on the agenda is recognitions.
Just a couple of quick ones. First, I wanted to thank the parents, students, and staff who took place in the parades that we had 4th of July. It was really nice to see Montemoy out there represented as I walked by, or as everyone was walking by, and as well as seeing our illustrious chair with his trombone and sneakers on one of the floats there. Yeah, but it was, again, really nice to see Montemoy represented, and I agree with Rich. Anytime there's a chance for our students to be out there and our staff or parents, all the better. At our last school committee meeting, we introduced Mark Wilson as coming to be the interim principal for the middle school, and he had the following day was his fast introduction to the elementary, or to the middle school staff and students. So I give Mark a lot of credit on very short notice coming in, and I thought that Brian Daniels did a nice job sort of handing off the middle school to Mark, and I think a number of you came to hear Mark share a little story and kind of get the students excited about school next year. So I've got a number of really great emails from parents that were really happy to kind of hear about Mark and being here. I also got a sweet email from Lynn Boucher, who's a fifth-grade teacher from Falmouth, who just wanted to write and just congratulate us for selecting Mark, and she writes that she saw him as this passionate, brilliant educator, innovative, enthusiastic, and is sure that he's going to bring that here. So it was nice to even see after the fact, folks reaching out from Falmouth really thanking or acknowledging what he had done in their community. So it's been nice over the last week to get to know Mark and have the whole administrative team get to know him better, too.
Very good. Next on the agenda, reports and discussions. The first item is subcommittee assignments. Believe it or not, we have a couple that we have too many people on. We can only have four per subcommittee, otherwise we have a quorum. So we need to, two of them reduced, which Brian and I will talk about later, but we have two that we need to add people to. One is the Cape Cod Collaborative Liaison, we need someone to step up into that slot, and we need two members to be members of the OPEB Trust. So if you could keep that consideration and maybe step forward later, it would be appreciated. Next is the Cape Cod Collaborative Agreement. Brian, you want to-
Sure. Everybody, I believe, received a copy of the current Cape Cod Collaborative Agreement by email. We don't have, eventually, we have to vote to either support it or not support it. We do have the right to have it amended. I would suggest that we would, I would ask that we have that on the agenda to vote at our next meeting in the end of August. For those who aren't perhaps familiar with what the Cape Cod Collaborative is, and I'll do my best to summarize it, Steve has been, Steve was a representative for quite a while and probably correct anything that I say that's inaccurate, but does everybody have a basic idea of what the collaborative is and does? Okay.
I was surprised, though, that, I thought it was only for special needs students, but when I was looking that up, it said without special needs. So that was a complete surprise to me.
Well, I mean, the basic concept is that, the basic concept is that there's a lot of things that school districts need, which might otherwise be prohibitively expensive, and by creating a collaborative, the districts are able to pool their resources in order to provide those services. If you looked at the second page of the collaborative agreement, actually pages two through four give you a very thorough analysis of what they do. They provide a lot of services, they provide a lot of special ed services, they provide a lot of transportation. They literally, for some school districts, only provide transportation services. They do have a wide number of programs, they are central, their administrative offices are in Ostrville. One of the key things to understand is that although Montemoy is a member of the collaborative, each town only pays a minimal fee to be a member, and I believe it's a dollar per student. So, you know, like 1,500 students or something, so basically it only costs Montemoy about $1,500 on a manual basis to be a member of the collaborative, which is not pretty much, not very expensive. But then you pay for what you get, so if you use the services, you pay your proportionate share, and if you don't, then you don't. So you're not really, even though you're working collaboratively to be able to afford the services, you still only pay for what you get. So it's really kind of a no-lose situation. It's a pretty big organization, as you can tell from the front of the collaborative agreement, it's been around since at least 1975. It's a fairly well put together, I mean, it's a significant organization, their budget next year is approximately $12 million. So they have a lot of, they're a big deal, and they're, I know, I imagine, I'm pretty confident that Harwich and Chatham were members throughout its lifetimes, and of course we have, we are members as Montemoy. Like I said, you can get a much more detailed explanation for the particular services they provide in the collaborative agreement. Like a lot of things of this nature, the articles of agreement are basically like the bylaws of a corporation that just sets up the structure for running the board of directors, if you will, of the collaborative. The board of directors are made up, at this time, they're made up of one member from each district, each member district. In some collaboratives, the membership, the board of directors is made up of superintendents, which might be something for the Cape Cod Collaborative to look forward, look at in the future. Frankly, it's, you could make a pretty good argument that the superintendents have a better understanding of what the needs are for the districts than individual school committee members. But at this point, to a great extent, it's the meetings, which are once a month on Wednesdays at 5:00, and they provide dinner. It's like a board of directors, it's analogous to us, it's to a school committee, it's a, you know, they don't do, you're not micromanaging what the collaborative does, you're just providing an overall support for what they do, make the types of decisions that a school committee would make. Like I said, if you want more information, unless you want to add anything to that, Steve?
Yeah, I would suggest, in all your spare time between now and the end of August when we have a meeting, if you have a chance, please look through this. They have been working on this for the last three years. The process with the state started three years ago, so if you could please take a look at it so we can vote in the end of August. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to field any of them as Brian can.
And just to add on to what Brian was saying, it's an organization, and each of the collaboratives does this. They evolve to meet the needs of their constituent districts, so, you know, so one could imagine that if you start to have a group of students, or you identify a group of students who have hearing challenges or vision challenges, you might say, let's, you know, let's have a central place where those students could receive educational services, rather than try to have each district, you know, go through a more expensive process of replicating those services at each, you know, at each separate district. And you might have, I think Brian was also mentioning that you may have situations where students aren't on ed plans. You could, you can imagine that, you know, things that you see in the news these days, you know, with drug and alcohol challenges, there are times that collaboratives will say, okay, should we have some sort of recovery programs for young adults with addiction, and have a centralized type of program that they could be at that doesn't necessarily necessitate a student to be on a, have an IEP to be part, you know, to be part of that. The other thing that the collaborative definitely helps all of us with is that it becomes a central place to help radiate out different sorts of professional development for staff, including the administrators. On July 22nd, most of the members of the Montemoy administrative team will be joining many of the administrators and the other Cape and Island school districts, and having a gentleman, Dr. Stephen Kukic, who is the director of the school, Transformation for the National Center for Learning Disabilities is coming to present, and again, you have that ability to bring in speakers, rather than having just come to a school and the school footing the bill for that, you know, we sort of cooperate and bring in, you know, bring in people to sort of help us look at how we deliver services to our students.
Next on the agenda is building and grounds maintenance. We have Mr. Lieutenant Witsch here to speak to us.
Any questions, yeah, questions that come up about mowing trees and just differences between Harwich and Chatham, and maybe where we might see the future of mowing happening?
All right, let's see. I don't do Facebook, so I'm just trying to keep up with all the pictures there. But recently, there was a posting, and it talked about the elementary school and some conditions there that weren't acceptable to be, or to anybody else as far as grass growing and dead trees. At that point in time, no excuses, but we, like everybody, when spring comes, your lawn mower's at the garage getting fixed, and you fell behind. At the same time, I'm working through the town trying to figure out what there are for requirements for me to take care of the trees along the front of that school. The first obstacle that I ran into was trying to define whether there was a right-of-way there, was it the town's responsibility versus the school's, and sorting through that. Now I'm with the Conservation Commission, and I'll be meeting with a young lady named Amy, and I can't remember what her last name is right now, and she's going to point out to me about wetlands, and are there wetlands within so many feet of the area of the trees, and what type of permissions we need if there are. So it's not as simple as saying, there's a dead tree, cut it down, even if it's unsafe, it's not that simple.
Can we put it on our surplus list and just put free firewood?
Um, no. But that, those are some of the conditions that I'm confronted with at the Harwich Elementary School. Now, if we come to Chatham, on the other hand, I have the town that takes care of all the grounds for me, and we do pay them for it, but if you look at the lawns, the trees, everything around this school, more so than the elementary school because we have irrigation here, it looks beautiful, and they complain to me that we're watering too much and they're having to cut it too often, but nice problem to have, it's nice and green. The Chatham Elementary School doesn't have irrigation, and it takes a lot of mulch to cover up the sins of a Cape Cod lawn. At this point in time, I'm trying to sort out what's going to happen at the high school, and there's a lot of different questions there as far as who's going to do it, how they're going to do it, who has the equipment. We've had conversations over the last couple of years with the town, with the golf commission, who's a budding neighbor, they all have the equipment. I'm not sure how far we're going to get with any of those conversations, whether we do it within house, and what that would mean to us as far- it within-house, and what that would mean to us as far as manning, and additional equipment that we might have to purchase, whether we can go outside to a contractor to handle it. And before I even get into any of that, the bigger issue right now is to get grass there, to get grass that'll stay, to, to guard against some of the runoff that we're experiencing. And we're trying to work our way through that. I was talking with Terry earlier about the third hundred-year storm that we've had this year. And I was out there just after the storm, and there was about an inch of water running off in every different direction, there was erosion, there were a number of things. So it was a good opportunity to see what that front-field area, how it was going to stand up. So that'll be on our agenda to talk tomorrow at the construction meeting. But at this point in time, I have a number of questions. I don't have answers for you. I hope to develop them over the course of the next several months. Quick overview, I'm not sure what else you have for questions, but I'll try and answer anything.
I really appreciate you being here. Of course, you know, I was the one that asked for it on the agenda, and it was only a reaction because on one of the Facebook pages, I saw first like three or five people, and then it kind of grew to all these people asking. And I think there was some confusion about the high school, because as, when I asked Scott, he said, well, we don't have possession of it yet, so...
Right.
The other group that are doing this, the contractors, thank you, are responsible for that. And I guess they got right on it after you mentioned something.
Which, unfortunately, you know, if we had to mention something, we'd have to get it, but they cooperate.
So, so that's really good here, especially if they can. But as far as the elementary school or the high school in the future, if I hear what you're saying, it sounds like we're not sure we have the right, the equipment that we need.
We're confronted with a completely different situation from one town to the next. Here in Chatham, like I said...
Are they doing the high schools?
Yep. Here in Chatham, the town maintains the grounds for us, and we pay them for it. And Howard, historically, the school maintained the grounds and was staffed and had equipment to handle it. At the high school in particular, they had nowhere near the grounds that we have today, oh, that we're going to have come next year. So we have to work our way through it, what that would entail on a number of different fronts.
So, if there was, there were questions about, do we have the right equipment for all this? Do we have enough staff? I don't remember all the different things. But basically, it seems as though, aside from what's important to me, the teaching and the learning and inside of the school and all that, for a lot of people, they just in town don't have any contact with the schools, except for looking at it when they pass by. So that's why I'm concerned. I just, you know, here we've got a new region, and this is nothing about maintenance or anything like that. It's just about that it would be great if we could figure out some way to have that be not an issue, that people walk, go by and they think, you know, isn't that beautiful? You know, this whole...
That's the first impression anybody has, when they walk in, and they, yes, absolutely.
So, anyway, would you update us if something else...
Be happy to.
...has to be, thanks. Thank them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, conflict of interest, special municipal employee. Mr. Braberg?
I think I can just give a brief update. My understanding is that this agenda item is now moot. It was initially on there because we have a, a part-time, I believe there are about a .2 employee that is a cafeteria monitor, who was also interested in being a .5 or a part-time custodian. And there is a, the, long and short, when it comes to the conflict of interest laws, you can't, you can't have two separate positions within a municipality. And in order to have two separate positions, you have to designate such things as special municipal employees. And it seems so, when we sought advice on this, we would actually have to go to both select boards to say that, you know, that certain fractional employees, you know, fit this criteria of being a special municipal employee, and could, could have two different positions within the, within the district. And I was, I was chatting with Steve earlier about, you know, how maybe we could go back and follow, you know, probably a little further with, you know, with the conflict of interest folks on whether or not if, if you don't deem it as two separate positions, but, but one that doesn't, you know, it's still less than a 1.0, but it's, as I said, it was going to be an agenda item because it, there was the potential for someone to have a conflict of interest, but that's, they are pursuing just the custodial position, so...
Steve?
Yes?
When we were Harwich, I was on one year, the last year of the Harwich School Committee. The school committee were special employees. I don't know if it was, it might have been called special municipal, but special employee, and they had, you know, the selectmen had to approve it. I don't know who got it done or why it was done. But I think that for a lot of people, there's not just being hired by the town, I think there could be a conflict, because, you know, if Brian had to defend somebody, if I worked with a student or something like that, I don't do this now, because I don't want any question about it. But it would be nice to be able to do that. But, you know, I don't get any, I wouldn't personally get any benefit financially. It doesn't seem to be any financial thing, but, but there are all these things that hang out there. So I would really like to see us become special. I think for lots of people, on the school committee at any time, it could be a conflict, where somebody may perceive it as a conflict. Do you get what I'm saying? I'm not, I'm not explaining that.
I'd have to research it.
I know that, I asked for the Board of Ethics to give me a comment when I first joined, and they said that there's a, there's a more layaway on things if you're special municipal, and I'm not exactly sure how all that takes up. But I wasn't thinking of two paid jobs for the town. Yeah, but there's a lot more stuff that goes along with that.
Next on the agenda, subcommittee reports. Subcommittee reports, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
In the information you have, I just want to share with you what, you know, what the administrative team is working on this weekend, will hopefully be a place, be a place to engage with you in a retreat sometime this summer, and hopefully you can do some brainstorming afterwards on what, what weeks might work, you know, might work for the group to get together for a, you know, for an afternoon or morning or evening. The, the, I guess, goal that I'd like to see, if we go back to our previous meeting and Bill Burkett was talking about, you know, it'd be nice to go and have sort of a school improvement plan on one page, just what does that look like? We've been, we've been following along a book that, you know, that many superintendents in school districts use, it's a book called Strategy and Action, that looks at sort of the process of developing a sound strategic plan that, that really focuses on learning and teaching, that, you know, that doesn't, you know, that's, that's not focused on all the other things. It's what things can you, you know, leverage to, you know, to most, you know, directly improve teaching and learning within a district? At the end of the day, that's, that's the goal, you know, you know, that's, that's the ultimate goal that you're after. In this, in this book, they, they walk you through a process that they, that they go through for a fictitious school district called, called Morewood Public Schools. And essentially, at the end of that, in the packets I gave you, is the diagram of what a one-pager looks like, that, you know, that has, you know, this is the vision of the district, that, that in many ways should be flowing out of that, that mission statement that we were discussing the last time. And, and then, if you take that, that vision and implement it into, into an action that's ultimately going to improve teaching and learning, you know, what sort of statement would you, would you have? But then, what are your, your small number of concrete strategic objectives that you want to address? And again, the focus is, here, each one of these are, are ones that tangibly will go and improve teaching and learning. And, and then, what sort of initiatives under there would you be implementing to, to move each of those objectives forward? So, so we've been going through a process with the, you know, with the administrative team, sort of looking at what sort of initiatives are we, you know, are we, or have we been undertaking, you know, this past year, or what we see, you know, coming along next year? And so the, the shortlist is here. I mean, this, so, so we, you know, we spent, spent a whole day, just sort of like, what are the, you know, each of these little things that, you know, that are happening? And then lumped that into categories. Also, just category here on curriculum and instruction, you know, professional development, student supports, community, communication and culture, accountability and operations. And, and then in the packet that I gave you, it's two little emails that I sent to the admin team for their homework for tonight. You know, the first, yeah, the first homework assignment is, is to pick ten or twelve of these initiatives that might be the main levers or key areas that would best improve student outcomes, in their, in their opinion. And, and they're, they're free to suggest, are there, are there things that we should be doing that, that aren't on this, you know, that aren't on this list? And then come up with some hypotheses, you know, if, if these things would move learning and teaching forward, why aren't we doing them now? Or what would get in the way of us doing it? I mean, you know, so clearly, if, if things would be helping, why aren't we doing it? Because at, at the end of the day, we've got, you have to do that sort of analysis to, to step back before you throw, you know, putting everything together for a strategic plan and say, okay, there, there might be some things that you want to leverage, but the rock's too big. You know, and, and if you, if you can't move it, no matter what, that's not bang for the buck. On the other hand, there may be some things that you can leverage really easily, but may do nothing in terms of improving learning and teaching. So you, you want to, you want to be strategic about what are the areas that you're, that you're focusing on. Then to kind of spin it on the complete opposite end, the other little thing I sent them for a homework assignment was, you know, was our, our mission statement that we, you know, we adopted, you know, with the school committee this past, this past year. And, and the mission statement has seven buzzwords in there. Building knowledge, positive character, resiliency, safe, supportive, creative and challenging. And, you know, and I asked them to go take this list of initiatives, and are we hitting those seven things in here? And if we're not hitting the seven things, you know, what's missing, you know, what's missing and why? Again, it's trying from both ends to say, is, is the vision or this mission statement really reflecting the direction that we're going? If not, should we either rethink the mission or rethink some of, you know, some of the direction? On the other hand, you know, on the other hand, looking at it from, from the bottom up, look at the initiatives and, and look to see what might be most tangible, so, most tangible to, to move learning and teaching forward. So, so we're, the, the goal is ideally, at the end of this week, we'll have something that looks like that, that Morewood Public as, as a draft. And I want to emphasize draft, as Katie would say, with a capital D, capital R, capital A, capital F, capital T. You know, that we would want to next, you know, come to you as, as a school committee and see if, you know, what initiatives, you know, do you think we should be looking at? Go to the staff, you know, go to the parents, and hear from, you know, hear from our students, and ultimately refine a, a document that should be sort of a strategic vision of where now the regional district is moving forward. And we've, you know, when I came here, there was a strategic plan, although some might argue that it was less strategy and more a recipe on how you bring two districts together. And as I said in a previous meeting, we're really at that point now where we need to put regionalization behind us, and say, we've regionalized, how do we now go from here and improve? So, you know, this is, this is sort of for us the first step in, you know, coming together and fleshing that out, and starting to, you know, starting to put some, some thoughts, you know, some thoughts behind it. But I just wanted to share with you, you know, where, where we're going and what the conversations were. And, you know, so we've been spending, you know, spending time just trying to kind of list what's, you know, what's happening, you know, what's happening in the district. And you step back, I mean, there's a lot of things that, that we've, you know, been tackling in the last year and, and intend to tackle looking forward, you know, including things that, you know, that, that even Denise brought. I, I, I agree, you know, that we need more math classes, and, and we, you know, one of the things on here is more physics, and we have a paucity of physics when it comes to the, you know, to the, you know, to the high school. And there's a number of areas that we, you know, we have sort of identified, you know, with the team, you know, that deal with STEM at different levels, or, you know, deal with the humanities, that we see as areas where we need to, you know, to be focusing more. So ideally, you know, before we get together, you know, for a, for a mini-retreat, you know, we can flush this out a little further, and, and at least from, from our vantage point, as the, as the school administrators come to you and, and say, hey, here's a, here's what we see as, as some of the bigger things that we can leverage to, you know, to improve student outcomes in the district. So welcome any questions or comments. Terry?
Steve, I think it's a great initiative. It's really basic and keeping things simple, and it might just allow us to review that mission that we kicked around for three or four months last winter, and get further input from staff, and, and the case, as Scott said. And out of this year process, it may just concretize what we're about at various levels. So, a great way, and your, your allusion to this retreat experience, I think easily a couple of hours during the, that evening or morning would be devoted for us laypeople to dive into this with the leadership team, and, and walk away with a, a better sense of what we're all about, from the classroom teachers right up to those who are creating curriculum. Further thought, and just jumping back to recognition, Denise's challenge in last year's budget challenge, and where do we come up with some sort of balance and still move on? These are all heady things that our superintendent, principals, and the teachers have to struggle and pinch and push with. And couldn't help but think the, last Wednesday, I and the family were walking on the Howard Sport Chamber of Commerce-sponsored stroll, and all I could think of was Scott and our town manager, Chris Clark, and our chairman of the Howard Selectment, Peter Hughes, volunteering to be on, on this dunk tank experience. And I walked away, because sometimes life is a dunk tank. You know, today is a dunk tank, with, with some of the challenges we face. And I just want to commend Scott for being a good sport, and the, and the likes that all of us turn to you and say, hey, jump, hey, check, what a, solve these problems that are coming your way. So as, as we stopped at the dunk tank, and the three leaders from Howard, our town manager, our selectman, and our superintendent... our selectmen and our superintendent, in a nice, odd way, letting themselves get all wet, certainly was a relief for what we normally see as a very, very serious business. So, that's a recognition, not that you're not always wet. I commend you for being a good sport last Wednesday.
I'm just, I'm going to make sure the next stroll, I have Mr. Hind there to take some of the pitches from his many students in town who definitely, definitely were there. And I'll give Richard Waystack some credit, that, you know, while I was up there, if you're a child and you threw the ball, as long as you threw the ball, in fact, you didn't even have to throw the ball, you could just run up and hit the big red knob with the ball. And so, I felt like I went it 50 times, but it was fun. Carrie?
Hi, very much the same as Carrie said. I arrived at that just too late to see all those people done it. You know, I felt terrible about it, but I didn't know the time, so maybe you'll do it again.
There's always time for school committee members.
I knew that was coming. So, the thing about the getting together for the time with working on our goals, I love the idea of meeting with administration. But last time, the whole time was taken up by hearing from administration, and we didn't have time to go sit and mull over what we were going to do. So, I think if we're going to do that again, it would be really important to have half the day or half the time strictly for the administrators, so we could get a background to tell us stuff, and then for us to go off separately and have the whole rest of the time. Because when we had done our, I mean, for the administrators to make their goals, it takes a long time. I think for us, it would take time for us to think about it and come up with ideas. So, I'd like to schedule it that way.
I think it's important to kind of emphasize, coming up with a strategic plan, you know, there's a lot of different ways to go about it. And, you know, so, what you see on the piece of paper before you is, I think at the moment, we're probably pushing 14 hours of work of the entire administrative team to get to that place. And we've got two more days, two more full days that we intend to put in on this, before we hope to have a rough draft. And I think that, I don't know, I'm sure somebody in this room was on the previous group that came together, but I think even that was probably longer than we would get together for just a retreat.
Chair, I would suggest that it actually warrants two meetings.
Okay, that's probably a good idea.
Because I do not want to shortchange what the administration presents to us. I want it to be thorough and so that we're well-formed, and then we can schedule something else that we get together and talk.
Because we have to set school committee goals, and out of that comes the superintendent's evaluation and some part of the strategic plan, which if the strategic plan is done before we ever get our goals done, then how does that work? Were you going to say any more about anything else, or is that the end of your report?
Okay, I've got more stuff to talk about too.
Steve, before we get past this issue, I don't remember if my memory is accurate, but I think also we did last year, we were kind of presented with the results of the administrative work at the meeting. I don't remember getting in advance, so.
Right, exactly.
You know, to the extent we could get the initial results, you know, well in advance of the meeting, I think would make it more productive use of our time, too.
And could we, could we set those terms before we leave today?
No, they haven't finished their work yet. It's hard.
No, but could we give out dates? Because I have to plan three weeks in advance on my calendar to do anything.
How about we do this, I'll work with Barbara to put out a due call for days in August that we might be able to do this. Because, again, it's, and it's possible that we, I doubt that in August, we'll be able to get everybody in this group and everybody on the admin team in the same place at the same time. It'd be nice if we could, but let me try.
But my suggestion is that if we just take the seven of us here, and we can get dates here that we can all do, and that goes forward, then we don't have to have all this back-and-forth business of who can do what when. Would take three minutes, probably, or five minutes, maybe. But at least we could get this part done.
You have just, you know, a couple other things. First, I went and we put an advertisement out on school spring today for assistant principals at the Harvitch Elementary School and at Monmouth Regional Middle School. You know, so, Adam O'Shea is definitely with us, and, you know, and I want to allow Adam to go and interview and decide if he would like to come to middle school, or if he'd like to go Harvitch Elementary School. We also know that we have, with Robin, you know, with Robin leaving from Harvitch Elementary School, is the assistant principal moving over to Chatham Elementary School, is the principal, that there's an opening there. And Sean Fleming, who has been doing a great job since, I think, was it 2001? He's been with the Harvitch Public Schools, and then later with Monmouth, has, he was excited, he got a job as alma mater, and is heading to NOSAT where he graduated from and lives, and is going to be the high school assistant principal for NOSAT. So, Sean gave me a letter today resigning from his position, so, you know, so we'll have that opening to fill. So, we've posted, you know, we have, we already have interest from internal candidates for the middle school position, and I know that we have even members within our own towns that have expressed interest in the Harvitch Elementary School position. So, it's, so there's some quality out there, even though it's, you know, early in July. And, you know, so, we look forward to having hiring committees in full gear in the third week of July. Just, and then the last, just the last thing for, you know, just for clarity, for Denise, I definitely agree, there are class sizes that are above the school committee guidelines, but the guidelines are an average class size guideline, and with the average being 19 plus or minus 2. And, you know, when you look at the overall class sizes for the high school, we're still within that guideline, and that's where we've tried to set the budget, you know, set the budget at. And I think the challenges that you have, even when I, you know, when I ran high school, it was much larger than Monmouth Regional, is you just trying to get students into the classes that they're going to have. There are some classes that are significantly above the average, and you have some classes that are significantly below that, you know, below that average. So, it's, you know, sometimes you have to kind of look, not just at, you know, what the class sizes are, but also, you know, where's that average at the end of the day? I know that Bill's not here tonight, but he gave me a brief update on the high school students who were seniors and didn't have the math that they needed. And according to Bill, it was about a handful of students that didn't have that math class that they needed, and that, I think Denise is right, that guidance counselors met with the students, and my understanding from Bill is that that has been resolved for each of the students. There are a couple of them, she's right, that there's virtual high school is the option that they have, and there are a couple of students who have enrolled in other math classes to get that math requirement met.
Do you know how many are taking the virtual high school?
I, it's only, it's less than a handful of students that were in this group anyway, so I don't know if it's two or three that are doing virtual high school.
So, in many of my years teaching, one thing I taught was math up through, among other things, up through grade eight. And it was the hardest thing, because now in our evaluation is teaching all students. And to my experience, and I have a brother who's a math high school teacher, they, to teach the range where something else, you know better than I do on science, but some of the other subjects, it's a little bit more comprehensive and not as lockstep on sequential skills. And so, you know, if you're teaching that range at the lower levels, you can have a couple of, you know, three years difference at first grade in where kids are. And so, at high school, you're going to have probably from second grade up till college. And, you know, it's nice that you've got some different variations of courses that people could get, but I'm mostly concerned about the kids that are at the lower levels. This little thing that Denise said about doing something on computer, I know my brother was telling me a little bit about practicing for PARC and all that and trying to do this. And, I mean, I would find that a nightmare, and I've got practically a doctorate. It's just, having worked with a lot of high school kids, you have lower level kids that don't have the skills, I mean, I think we heard last time about, you know, if you had one and then you had to skip several years. If we have kids that are coming from somewhere else, and they just don't have any of the background, it's horrible. I don't, I really don't, I used to teach at the college office, those online courses were much harder, you had to have extremely motivated kids. Some kids I worked with dropped out of school thinking they could do that, and I've not known, I've known one that's like 50 that did it, but none of the other ones that I knew ever passed that. So, you know, I really, I love the idea of taking the $170,000 from the $665,000 to go in some of those things for that group of kids. The idea of trying to get to our kids to become, you know, higher achievers, I think that can happen, but it's going to take time. And right now, there's a gap where, you know, if you're starting out with kindergarten kids and you're doing that lockstep, I think those kids are going to be ready for the most part. There are some kids that won't be because of motivation or learning needs. But for kids that are already, and they're especially heading towards the senior year, I care about each one of these kids. And it sounds like some of these kids are going to be left to drift. So, I would really like to, I don't know if I can make a motion, but I'd really like to, we're having kids leave, and we're having kids, I don't even know what the dropout is. Do you know what the numbers of dropouts were last year?
I don't.
Okay. So, I just, you know, I worked in Chatham, it was one dropout kid a year, it was a terrible experience. I don't know lately what it is, but I think we owe it to those kids to make sure they have what they need.
And I think without having Bill or potentially Rick Gifford here to talk about what the conversations are, and sort of profile who the kids are, that they're placing in the classes.
Well, the problem is, our next course, our next meeting is the end of August, so we have this information now. Unless we're going to make another one of these meetings in a couple of weeks, then I'd like to make a motion now.
I would just like to add to that, that, you know, when you talk about class sizes reaching above our optimal numbers, particularly with math, you know, I said before I knew you picked up on it, that I was a student who struggled in math, I was on the cusp, but I'm not wired that way. And so, I was often in that place where if I missed a key concept, it was like listening to a foreign language, which you hit on at the last meeting. My oldest son is very much the same way. And so, I worry about large class sizes, particularly in math, for that reason, and I, I'm not exactly clear, but it sounded like that one supplemental math class that was going to help those students who were struggling, or that that has been cut. So, I just, I don't know what, I'm just expressing my concerns there.
I apologize, I missed the last meeting, so I'm perhaps a little bit behind the eight call, but I read over Ms. Sessler's letter from, I guess, the last meeting, and I had concerns about this as well, really that we need to make sure that we're serving our struggling math students, and cutting that course or those courses kind of makes me a little bit alarmed. That, and as Amy has just mentioned, the large class sizes. I speak foreign languages, and I know if you lose part of that when you're in the process of learning, you get way behind. And math is a similar situation. I also, as I said, I missed the last meeting, but some of these statistics that she put in her address from the last meeting, were these addressed, as far as how many students had registered for a course, and how many students had made it to the primary choice? Those things, were these addressed in the last meeting? Or, did I miss something? I'm sorry.
I think if the-
The fact that you responded there was going to be no reduction in math personnel about those, I highlighted some things because I didn't know what had happened.
I think at the last meeting, we talked about what the primary enrollments were in each of the, each of the business classes that were put up. I think one of the public comment folks were talking about.
Sorry? So, I was asking specifically about what was written in this letter, were these points addressed?
I don't think, I wasn't prepared to go talk about the numbers in business or in the math classes.
We were told we couldn't deliberate on anything last time, so we weren't able to talk about it, that's why-
It wasn't on the agenda, I understand, okay, I understand.
I asked for it to be on the agenda tonight.
Just, I alluded to it earlier, I think that what took place a couple of weeks ago, Denise's summary of what her perception of those issues are in math, and then the report that she passed in to us, I think, Denise, you left a little bit prior to the principal's speaking. And he did not have specific data either, but he did give a different picture to the school committee as to what the progress was regarding these courses that were going to be eliminated. Frankly, I personally, I feel that what I've listened to, and also the superintendent's comment back to Denise, that I'm very comfortable allowing our leadership team to begin in the next four weeks to look into this, come up with a plan to address it. That's what we have, a full-time principal, and a director of guidance, and the superintendent. So, myself, I would not be comfortable, because of the two sides of the story, of voting any motion about, from the school committee, saying, commit $170,000 from $650,000, if my memory serves me, that's out-year savings, not this year. So, before we commit to that this evening, I think it's the task of the superintendent and the curriculum director, Dr. Blanchard, and the principal of the high school, specific to this coursework, to take a hard, fast look and make that administrative decision in the next two weeks, three weeks. to take a hard, fast look and make that administrative decision in the next two weeks, three weeks, as they progress towards looking at student choices. So, I think that's the, that's, that would be my suggestion.
I think it's also important to remind people that the budget's been set. You know, so, so we can, we can look at diverting funds, but we can't really look at adding funds without going back to our two towns and saying, you know, we're gonna be adding because of X, Y, or, you know, X, Y, and Z. You know, so it's, you know, it's, you know, after, after you go through town meeting, you've set, you know, you've set your, your budget. And, you know, the, you know, the savings, you know, the savings that, you know, that we anticipate with early, you know, with the early retirement is part of what we've been looking at, and that's budget, and the budget projections out in the out-years.
Steve. Right. After you.
No. I just, the guidance department is still working with students to finalize schedules.
Correct.
And Bill has not finalized what courses are being taught or not taught, or what classes. So, this is still a work in progress. And-
That's good.
Why are you saying the head technicals, Terry?
Because I just heard that those kids are scheduled for an online course. I guarantee you, unless they've got somebody teaching them in their-
Well, we don't know which particular students are taking an online course. And, and it's out of our purview as to whether they need additional services. So, I, guidance is, is still working with students to establish next year's schedules. So, can you, within the next two weeks, send an update out to the school committee as to where that stands?
Okay. And I think it's, it's also, I, I think it's important to note that, again, when you put together a high school schedule, there are gonna be history, you know, kids that want certain history classes that, you know, that won't get the history class that they want. And, and we have, yeah, same thing in English or, or language. You know, I, I, we can look at the math, but, you know, and what, you know, yeah, a set of, you know, a set of students in math. But I actually think when guidance gets through the whole piece, looking at the whole and, and all the departments and where, you know, where students, you know, where students aren't getting their primary, you know, their primary thing. It gives us data on where do we need to go and potentially look at shifting staffing, you know, with, you know, within the high school or, you know, altering, you know, altering things, you know, as we, as we look forward. But it's, you know, you know, we're hearing, we're hearing math, but, you know, but, you know, but it, it ends up being a bubble that if, if you address the math potentially, it becomes more challenging on the language side, or more challenging on the history side. Right.
A couple of things. First of all, with regard to the budget issue, as was pointed, certainly as was pointed out, that the type of savings that was brought up as a result of the, as a result of the number of people who are leaving the system is gonna be in the following year, not, not the next year. But in addition to that, it's important to remember, that's not creating a slush fund. It's not suddenly creating a pile of money that we can just then decide to send, to put a third of or a 26 percent of into a particular place. I mean, that, that money, that savings is, is anticipated by both towns to be helping to cover our entire budget. And, and so, some portion of those, those funds will be used throughout the budget. It's not that we have a sudden influx of money. However, it would be, I'm sure that everybody in this room and everybody at these tables is concerned with the issues raised by Ms. Sessler, you know, now two meetings in a row. And, and I, and while I agree with what Terry and Steve say about the fact that, that we have a, a large number of professionals who are dealing with these issues, I think this is, I think this topic has come up enough between the last two meetings. We had issues at the beginning of the school year last year because there was problems with getting students into classes. I think it's an important enough topic that we should, not out of any disrespect at all with regard to the people who are trying to solve this problem, but I think it would be, I suggest it would be appropriate to have a, an item on the agenda for our next meeting, which I, which I recognize is the end of August. But I think is the advantage of being at the end of August is, there'll be plenty of time for these things to be worked out. And it, and if we put an agenda item on where we request a, it has mostly, I guess it has primarily to do with the high school. If we ask the principal of the high school to be here to kind of be able to address some of the concerns raised tonight and the last week, and any concerns that this is, you know, given Facebook and all the other things, we're gonna, people are gonna be talking about this all summer long. So, I would request that we do have an agenda item on that, and ask the principal to be here to, you know, this, some of these, these concerns were specifically raised in writing. You can review them, speak to the people who know how to fix these problems, or convince every member, not so much us because it's not in our purview, but the people that we represent, to convince them that these are being dealt with in an adequate way. So, I think that would be the way to handle it.
Could we get some advance information if we're going to put this on the agenda?
I'm sorry. I can't hear what you're saying.
Sorry. I-
Yeah.
Still have a cold. Could we get advance information before having it put on the agenda so we can see-
Well, that's why I asked Mr. Carpenter to send us an update in the next two, after two weeks, so that we get a progress report as we go forward.
Yeah, just so we'd be, you know, well-equipped to talk about it and do, you know, whatever that we could do at our next meeting.
I, I just have a point of order that I think needs to be brought forward. This is a small district, and in the case of these math students, the discussion is centering around a very small number of students. And there needs to be concern about student confidentiality, that any of these students might be identifiable.
Sharon.
So, in our budget for one year, for this year, we, we have the ability, unlike evidently other departments, to move things from one place to another. Would there be something like, I don't know, X materials or something that we could take? Just the point six for math. I mean, I'm, I, I'm interested in all of this, but I'm concerned not just about those five kids, but a bigger group of people that the point six would take care of. And so, a point six is 20,000, 30,000, you know, I, I don't know, 40, I, I don't know exactly depending on who's getting it. It's not a large amount of money, though. It seems that when we go over in something, we can find it. And I don't know where we necessarily find it, but it's there because we'll be using it later on. So, I'm just suggesting, and that we either have another meeting and take this up in two weeks, or that I'll make a motion now for that. I don't know what you prefer, if you want. I mean, maybe nobody wants to have a meeting in two weeks. I don't know.
Nancy.
I'm kind of getting a little bit of everything that I agree with. And, you know, alluding back to something that Terry said, that Mr. Burke had brought up, and I have a couple of notes, but one of them being that the guidance is contacting the parents on how to accommodate the students to meet their graduation requirements. So, I think it's kind of hard for us to have this conversation without Bill or Mr. Gifford here to follow up. And then also following up on Barbara's point is that we are a small district, and we are talking about a small number of students. So, I think it's, and then even further, going back to an email I got earlier today from the high school saying that they're still working on the schedules. And that, I can't remember exactly, but a couple of weeks, they would be sent out to parents. And then once the parents receive them, then contact-
It was written in the end of August.
And they were gonna have open guidance hours. Eight to two or eight to twelve. I can't remember all the numbers. But for a set week or two, there was gonna be open guidance hours for the parents and the students to go in to address these issues. So, I think we're kind of premature having this conversation in a way because not everything has been dealt with. So, while it's good to have the concern before it's being dealt with, on the other hand, everything could be fine in two weeks. And those students who are currently in a virtual high school course, not by choice, they may not be in two weeks. So, you know, having an update in two weeks, and once everything is situated, maybe these students want to be in that class. I don't know that.
There are-
So, it's, it's just, I think it's premature to, to have it. I think waiting and having an update. And then, once we get an update, if that update proves to be something that we don't like and would like to see worked on, then we could set up a meeting, something along that line, so that we have something planned at the end of August, so that everything can be set. And yet, if, once the schedules come out, and if there's still something that's just not quite sitting right with us as a school committee, which we have to be careful of what's under our purview and what we're supposed to be dealing with, then we could set something. So, that's just kind of where my thoughts have been going, listening to everybody.
Sharon. Just a reminder for all of us, it wasn't that long ago that we were sweating out this coming year's budget to the tune of $640,000 shortfall. So, Sharon, I, and you know, I think all of us feel the same way about the struggling math student. You include myself in that as a kid. And, and, and that's why I, I entrust this superintendent and the principal of the high school and give them several weeks in the summer to address this small number of youngsters whose needs exceed, at the moment, our ability to hire a point six. Why? Because we were looking to cut staff at the high school. We needed to. Now, that argument, the, the staff didn't feel it was necessary, but the final judgment was that we had to go begging at the Howard side of things. And fortunately, we're given $480,000 or thereabout to balance our budget. So, right at the moment, to say that, nah, 30,000 bucks, one way or the other, I'm sure the superintendent can find that in the next 10, 10 days or so. I, I don't, I don't know if that's the best business way for us to be looking at as a committee. These folks are hired to manage this school system, specifically how best to accommodate the quality and structure at the high school. We bumped heads right into a terrible budget, budget year last year. And the towns, in their way, bailed us out. We don't want to have to have that happen again. So, this issue is an important one. Now, at some point, why point six in math? What about the six point and a half that we took from the high school? All of those had legitimate reasons to stay. So, I, I recommend that we, we use this summer time for the administration to balance out this high school schedule. And then informationally have, and clearly, with or without a, an agenda item, which I agree with, our superintendent is here, so what's going on here. So, you give the superintendent, the principal of the high school, the director of guidance, and the curriculum coordinator, two or three weeks to manage these probably finite numbers. I think we'll probably, hopefully, come up with a, a reasonable solution for a small school system. Will it accommodate every child? Probably not. But that, that would be my direction. I just want to add one quick thing. You know, when I asked, when I asked about it being on the agenda, I was assuming it was not just dealing with the math problem. There are a number of other issues raised in her presentation about whether we have the right number of English teachers, the right number of math teachers, the right number of, you know, I, I'm looking at it as a more global issue than just dealing with a small number of math students. And the reason I think it should be on agenda is because we're violating the open meeting law even having this discussion tonight. It should be an item that is properly agended, so we can discuss it.
I asked for this last time to be on the agenda, and everyone but you were here. And this was agreed to. And then it wasn't on the agenda. So, it was supposed to be on the agenda.
Sharon. We cannot discuss something that is not finalized yet. They're still working on it. How can we have a conversation on something that they have not had a chance to fully address? And that is why it's not on the agenda. So, please, can we just let the professionals do their job? Scott will update us in two weeks, and, and we can determine whether we need to have a meeting before the end of August based upon that update. Does that satisfy your need?
If we, if we had a meeting in two weeks that was canceled, if everything was fine, but by not having it put on the agenda, that means that people didn't even know this was coming up, which I heard was under Scott's report, which we can discuss what Scott's report is. But I do agree with what Terry said about the financial situation and the budget problem. That was a serious problem. And we've got through that, you know, and I don't even know what's gonna happen next year. But, you know, but there are some things not quite happening because we were told at the beginning that if there were enough kids signing up for things, that they would get them. Then there were enough that signed up for the business, several business courses. I don't know if it was all of them. And they didn't get it. And now there are some math cuts that we didn't know of. I see, I see Scott and the administration like executive branch, and I value them just like I value the national executive branch. But where are the checks and balance for that? That's our purpose. If we just said all the time, you know, everything's great, there'd be absolutely no need for the school committee.
I, I think, I also want to emphasize and reiterate one piece that Terry said. Even in a big school district, not every child is gonna get what they potentially want or need. And you try your best to accommodate all of them. You know, I, I know between Nancy and I, we had three middle schoolers that, that the parents and children wanted Mandarin this year. And I believe one of them got it. You know, one of, you know, one of three. And, you know, and it's, it was this finite resource that we, you know, were trying to get and accommodate as many students and families that wanted Mandarin to be able to try that at, at, at the middle school. And I think we, you know, it's, I agree with Brian. You have to look at this in a, and, and I think this is why the counselors need to kind of go through that process with the families to help as many families get students into the classes they want. And I think getting a report back on, on where, where are we, you know, short? And, you know, and again, it's, you know, it's, you know, the, the hope is that we don't have, have them reporting back what the report was two weeks into the school year this past year, where there was 90 students that still weren't in a class, that there, there were holes in schedules. And, and there were, you know, and, and we went and found a way to go and plug it. But we, you know, we can't, we, we can't go and plug every potential hole that's there. We have to kind of live within a budget and, and try to provide the best program we can as, you know, as to as many possible students as, as we possibly can. But, but there are, you know, there are challenges that you, you'll have some things that even in a large district, you, you can't potentially get every single student in every single thing.
Can I just say that, I mean, Brian, I would like to have an agenda item to cover not just the struggling math students, but the whole point, all the points that were raised in other departments that were raised here.
And I'd just like to say that when, when we can't meet the needs of, or the wants, as you put it, for all of us, my, my dedication is to meet the needs. So, that the kids, what they need to graduate, and I don't mean just on paper, but they actually graduate, and they actually get the skills down there in this, what they need. One of our things that you just mentioned on the mission statement was support. So, I think that takes precedent over the wants that other people might have.
I don't disagree.
Is there any more discussion?
Okay. We will move on to action items. And the first item is declaration of surplus equipment.
Who's gonna do that now that you're the chair?
I think Ms. Scott likes to do it.
I would like to move to declare surplus, some 208 library books from the high school. In addition to-
Can you ask a question?
Finish the motion first.
I can't think of it on a roll once I get going. Can't stop. In addition to the band room, storage room at the middle school, two conga drums, three boxes of miscellaneous drum hardware, one fiber case bass drum, one bass drum, thank you, sorry.
one bass drum, thank you, sorry, and one, I was already moving on to the one Suzo bone fiber case.
Second.
Any discussion?
Question. I just have a question. What happens to the library books?
Those particular books have water damage and are not usable, for the most part. So we would probably recycle them.
So would you take any that are usable out and bring them to the transfer station, perhaps? You know, don't they send them abroad or something?
We're open to.
We've done that in the past.
Yeah, we have done that.
The librarian has gone through them, and I thought that they were all, had a moldy, musty smell, water damage. And that's why they were pulled out of the system. But I can review it with her.
It's hard to tell from the picture. I was just looking at a couple on the top. They looked in pretty decent shape. I thought maybe they were just completely out of date, and that's why I'm removing them.
And we've been very conscientious when we dispose of things and try to get them to people who could use them.
Yeah, I just hate to throw anything away. Another question. The conga drums, is there a picture of them?
Not with the package, no.
I was curious what the disposal was for the conga drums also.
Just a point. I think that when we declare them surplus, it doesn't mean they're trash. They're just declared surplus from the district, so that they can be dealt with and either sold, because we have sold some stuff that was declared surplus, or donated, or, so it's not just that they're trash.
Yeah, no, I just wondered what happened to them. Where are they going?
What says there? It says condition unusable, broken.
But it also says estimated value of $100. I don't know, unusable, broken. For my son, when he was two, somebody gave us a snare drum. He was a, played the drums in a set. And to the drum player, it was unusable and broken. But my son has had a blast with it, and now he's six, you know, and he still uses the drum. So it was my thought that, you know, the conga drums, it might be a similar situation. Maybe they could go to a preschool or something. I was just curious what we do with things like this.
Well, we do a number of different things. We have people that come forward that say we're interested in conga drums, or we donated them to other schools, we've thrown things away, we've recycled things. So it's been a variety of things. I would have to have a conversation with the principal and Mr. Napier if they have had any conversations with anybody who has expressed an interest. And as Nancy said, then it just gives us the opportunity to then get them out from underneath, so we don't end up with a whole lot of stuff hanging around the school.
Stuff, right.
Yeah. So if you would like one, we could.
Honestly, I'm sure my son would love to have a conga drum, but I'm not sure I really want something else in the house, especially with the loud. Air plugs. But I mean, I could think of a couple preschools to send them to or something.
It really depends on the condition. If they're safe, they're broken, and they're still safe.
Are they safe? Exactly, yes.
Being a member may be a conflict of a conga drum, to be a school committee member. It is the summer, and that I apologize for a terrible pun.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stand? Okay, so move? We do not need to move on the second action item. So I will entertain a motion to adjutant to executive session pursuit of mass terror law 38. I know you wanted to say it all, didn't you?
No, I was thinking we didn't have that.
Yes, we do. Do I have a motion?
No, move.
Second?
Second.
And we will not be returning to open session. We'll have a roll call.
Aye.
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 Do we notice that we have one no in the executive session?
No, big difference.
I get properly elbowed.